Okay, good morning everyone and welcome to the uh town board meeting of the town of Newcastle. It's March it's uh excuse me October.
It's early.
It's early. It is October eighteenth eight AM and this is going to be part two of our budget presentations. So today we're going to be looking at DPW, water, refuse, police. And uh we'll be having preliminary budget dis decisions. And um sometime in the middle of the work session, we will break for exec. Okay, so may I have a motion to open the work session?
I'm ready.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, hand it over to you.
Okay. Uh we're starting this morning with the Department of Public Works. Barth, Tom, and Giulia are here. And uh where do you want to start today, Bart?
Uh so I just wanted to just have a brief introduction.
Hang on, Rob, can we have the page number or they?
Well, I don't know where he's starting.
Well.
So Bart will tell us the page number.
Alright.
Well, if he wants to start with refuse and recycling, it's on page ninety five.
On the paper or the computer?
Such a question.
I think they should, I think they should match.
One eighty-five on the PDF.
If you're following them.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll keep that. So I'll I'll uh.
We'll sign it back easy?
Do you give them paper page numbers?
Yes.
You were just gonna do a brief.
Yeah, yeah. Of of public work in general.
Of some stuff we've done in the past year since one say good morning. Uh introduce ourselves, Bart, this is Tom Cassello, Michael Sacali, and Julia Golden from the Department of Public Works. And uh thank you for giving us an opportunity to review the budgets that are under the purview of the DPW. So these consist of the highway fund, the consolidated water district, refu district, refuse district, several sewer districts, and a few small water districts. Together, they account for approximately twenty-one million dollars of the town budget. Um throughout the budgets, as I'm sure you've already heard, you're gonna see increases for CSCA contractual obligations, liability insurance. Uh notably in DPW, there's increases for automotive parts and automotive related items this year. Crisis for asphalt, drain pipe, and some other items that we use that were volatile over the past few years have stabilized. Although we are still seeing long lead times with vehicle and equipment purchases for automotive parts. Um additionally, specialized electric equipment, there's a long lead times with that that's affecting to the projects that we have ongoing. And I'd like to acknowledge the hard work done by everyone in this department and mention this past year, we paved seven and a half miles of road. We replaced a large culver pipe on Indian Hill Road. And uh our highway department alone responded to over a thousand service requests. This does not include the proactive work that we do. This does not include phone inquiries for water billing, recycling questions. That's highly specific alone. Um our water department greenhouse installed four hundred and fifty feet of water making on all of the road. Um we have a contractor doing uh water main work on pipeline with metal area and that project's almost completely. Had some major equipment purchases this year which were necessary to keep everything going. We see the grinder for recycling. Uh Michael talked about during recycling budget and we also just received three mason dump trucks and an electric van. Some other projects that we completed were converting the train station to electric heat. Um finishing the multipurpose room at Amsterdam Park and also installing um heat pumps there. Um over at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, we replaced the roof, um finished the installation of a fuel tank for the generator. And also installation of the generator. That project is not completely still on a transfer switch uh to install there, but we got rid of the rental generator. Because uh they asked everyone to see completed. So this morning, I'd like to start by reviewing the refuse district budget and recycling form and Michael Sacali is gonna go through that now. We're all on that page that we started.
Good morning, everybody. This is Mike Seto, Michael. Um second form, um that's the second format, the major responsibilities. One is recycling center, vendors, comes in and comes out. My second responsibility would be new commercial and residential foundation contracts. And lastly, I'm at a three yard waste area. Um residents, compost, yard waste comes in, we process it, and we sell it to residents. That's my three major responsibilities that I handle. Um start with the budget, page uh ninety-six. We start with revenue, the good part. We did the opposite way, but okay, put it here. Um.
I like your optimistic take on that.
Yes, yeah. Um so pretty much the main main objects are the yard waste area, which is line item eighty-one sixty twenty-one thirty-one. Page ninety-six.
Let us get to the page hang on a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I think that you know, you have to be a little patient with us because they're not in order. We're going from eighty-six to one twenty-nine, right? Um. Just solid waste. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I got it, yeah.
Okay, alrighty. So the second item down is yard waste. Um that is the revenue we receive from all of the yard waste. Plus and uh which have come in. Um as you can see, we are above our number, but our projected number from last year, we projected thirty. Yeah. We probably then we adjusted it to forty, we'll probably be that number um by some, well not by much. As you can see, we're only four thousand dollars off and we're not able to throw it. So that number should increase, hopefully. Next light item, we'll probably be about there. It's uh just pretty much my water bags for the composting program. We do the food composting program. Refrigerators will make our number. Um newspaper and cardboard, unfortunately, I have no control of that, whatever, residents brings. So that's that's rebate we get. Um scrap metal, we're above our number. And compost and mulch cells, we're way up this year, as you can see. Um we blew through our number. And then we blew through our budget. So those are all very positive.
Michael, do you think that's because of the piece of equipment?
Um I think, well, that that helped our product productivity more than the sales. I honestly think it's still part of the fact that things are getting very expensive and we offer them. Because what I'm seeing is the residential, it used to be equal commercial, because we sell to commercial and we also sell to residential. Residential as this program, it just gets bigger and bigger every year. And we're selling more, and I think it's because it's still ten dollars a yard for residents versus if it was thirty, thirty-five. So I think that has a huge impact on, I mean just, you know, as things get more expensive, people are, you know, taking advantage of an opportunity they could take. I think that's a good point. Um if you could turn to my page, uh ninety-eight, this is the expensive part. This is the first page. There actually, there's not much on here. It's pretty much basics, you know, house supplies, you know, stuff I use for the office. Nothing major on there. Uh leaf bags, we're not purchasing this year, but we're gonna, as you can see, we uh we ask for six thousand dollars because we'll need some for next year. We're about out, we'll make it through the season, but by the spring, we'll need more. So that's why we're asking for six thousand dollars for next year. We buy them every like two years, we buy them a year. Sometimes in the past, we've actually bought them privately because if any county contract was more expensive than private. First time I've ever seen that. I was surprised. There was, oh Bart said that because I was going with the contract thinking it would be cheapest. We went outside and it was actually cheaper last time. So we'll see in a bit.
Un- unfortunately, that's that's not unusual. It happens more often than you think.
Really?
Yeah, you think state contract, absolutely cheapest price. It's not.
Wow, I've I've never seen it before.
No, it just it 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 relieves you from having to look further. The state does go out to bid, but you know, that's bid at some point in time.
Yeah.
There could be other people that didn't bid on the state contract. So um you know, the state controller will accept that as uh as a competitive bid if you take the state bid. Etanjah can be found cheaper.
Yeah. I I'd never run into that. So thank you for Bart for bringing my thing.
It's 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 not frequent that that happens, but.
I was just gonna automatically order from there. Part of it's it's more prices than it might be. And it was a big difference still. I think it was like six cents a day.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
Just curious, I see how many bags do we use in?
Um it varies. Um I don't know offhand. I don't know. Um I would guess, my guess would be probably about three to four thousand bags. We sell for seven to ten percent.
Just curious for scale, yeah.
Yeah, it it varies. Um it COVID really knocked our numbers way down and they've been, and most of our items, everything that we sell during COVID for whatever reason really slowed us down, but it's every year.
Oh, I was I was interested. These are ones that you sell to?
Yes, for the the brown ones, you said on the side of the road.
Okay. Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Um on the next page, um the the some of the bigger items are the maintenance and repair. You see eighty-one sixty zero four eight zero. Um that is maintenance repair. That number, we decreased it this year because as Bart mentioned, we have a new grinder. Um so far, it's working wonderfully. It's really helped with our productivity. We, the last machine was twenty years old and we were down more than we were up. Um we were ordering parts all the time. It was constantly breaking down. So it's really nice. We've used it. We haven't used it, this this coming up next, probably four months, we'll only use it straight through. So we, because the as the lease came in, we start grinding the yard waste. And then we go with this making mulch in spring. So for the next four months, it really, that's when it really, that's when I really need it. But um so far, it's been wonderful. Been a huge help. Um it makes, and I actually believe it makes a nicer product. We still have to play with it because it's in screens, it's in sizes, but uh it makes a nice product. So residents seem to be happy. So it's been working out well. Uh the maintenance repair is down. And we're asking from next year, but unfortunately, we had a um unexpected item break this year. Um one of our shaker boxes, it's probably been a product we've had for twenty years. Surprisingly, the motor blew. Um so we have to put the motor on. So unfortunately, we um exceeded our number, our expected number for this year. Something we did for sake. Um if you flip down two more, contractual services, that is um for garbage collection. Thanks, and that's directly to Santa Pro for making collections. Um.
Mike, just one question. Are we, Santa Pro, does that go, does that contract, can we extend through twenty-six?
Yes, yes. Yes, it expires in the end of twenty-six. So we we got approval to extend it to the end of twenty-five and then we'll have one more extension.
Yeah. We have one, one, one more.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
Yes. But the commercial, the commercial is over in June. It expires in June. So we'll have to go out and bid in spring, early spring too.
Is that, are we still jointly bidding that with the school?
Yes, yes, yes. That ends in June. So as soon as the new year comes, something will have to happen. Um we generally uh increase that, that number gets increased by CPI from Santa Pro here per contract. Um we use October's number, which is not out yet. Um so I went up with September, September's number is three point four. So I generally go conservative, but I generally raise it five percent. So we're gonna get five percent more this year. Usually um comes right in there. Um if you go down two more, uh two more lines, the transfer sites charges, that is for actual tipping fees. Um and again, it's more or less the same thing. It's we generally, we raise it five percent just for CPI. Same thing with the seniors, senior services, which are grateful of that. That's where our residents are able to get, seniors are able to get a discount on backdoor service. Still have long driveways. A lot of residents are taking advantage of that, especially in the last couple of years. Um if you go down two more lines, a big line for me is maintenance and repair. As you can see, the number's down. Um things are, we have a lot of new equipment. So things are, things are working well and we're saving that department. Rest of the items are diesel. You know, we're we're a little under, but we'll probably use, we'll probably get close to our expected fifty thousand, like you said, the next two months, that thing a lot steady. So we'll probably be close to that number. Um that's about it.
On the uniforms and and foods, throughout uh DPW, you'll see an increase on that for highway, water, refuse.
Uniforms, yeah.
Uh by the CSCA contract, the uniforms are purchased every other year. So this is purchase year.
See, yeah, I figured.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also just to mention on the the transfer site charges, so we've seen the cost for disposal of the municipal solid waste increase um over the past couple of years as well. That's been more than the CPI and the the challenges that are uh in the recycling markets really for the coal mine a little especially.
Yes, yes.
The the paper, there seems to be a better market for, but the plastics, it's it's a challenge.
Yes, lots of can, but especially plastic, plastics become a major problem for everybody.
What ultimately happens with them, when they're in the market, they just burn?
Yeah, unfortunately, it just goes in the trash, yes.
Oh, but it's it's burned, it's buried?
Yes, yes. It's the most the most garbage in in Westchester. It's in the sun in the center, so yes, it does, unfortunately. I think Santa Pro does a good job. I think well, everyone's working really hard, but this is, since China stopped accepting in two thousand eighteen, it's really been a struggle for the whole market, for the whole country. Uh I think the whole world, actually. Uh it's just a, it's a, and it's, every, every time we watch the news, it's on, I don't know, I watch it all the time, there's a lot of news on it. So it's something we're talking about, but no solution yet. It's and it's bigger than Newcastle, unfortunately.
So people, you know, are putting their plastics in to recycle, but it's they're not, they're actually not, that's.
Yeah, it's. It's not a huge market for.
Yeah.
Um that, I mean, we first sells really well. Metal sell, metals by far the best because it's made both over. Um glasses decent, but plastic is just not, something's very bad about it anymore.
Plastic is our enemy.
Yes, it is. Yeah, I need to hear more and more about it. So eventually, hopefully someone will say.
Alright, well let's keep going.
Are we sort of, we we go with Michael? I got I have two more questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh for for the mulch, these, our mulch is ten dollars, which is extremely cheap compared to thirty dollars a yard. Why not increase it?
Um.
It'd still be incredibly competitive and cheap, but if you increase it by fifty percent, it's still something to get dollars based on the numbers here.
Yes, residents pay ten, commercial residents, uh commercial contractors pay more.
And and outside.
And that number fluctuates anywhere from, what average is twenty-two till probably thirty is probably the average. But um yeah, we're always trying to stay within that number. Um we we've talked about raising residential and the commercial. Um but to stay competitive and we, because we accept all of the residents' yard waste. Santa Pro collects it on Mondays and brings it to us. We, it's something we have to, we have stuff coming in. We have to make sure, we ensure we get. We don't wanna give a price where we have a bunch of yard waste sitting in the yard that's robbing. So it's, we even try to price it where we make sure we sell all of what we come in.
Well, it seems like you could do me even just like two dollars more would be.
Um it it's something we discuss next year. I'm I'm open to.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at it more so than no, uh you know, we look at the the fee schedule uh towards the end of the year because that's authorized at the first meeting in January, we still look at it.
Yeah, yes.
The the thing is, we we don't guarantee the content of our work.
Yes, yes.
And that, that's that's not they, everybody else, you know, so there's poison ivy thrown in there, there could be invasive thrown in there. It's 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 not a pure product for the way.
Yeah. Yes.
So it's not, it's not a direct comparison to that inside.
I I I I would say it's pretty, it depends. Ultimately, we 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 process what we get in. So if we get in garbage, we get, we give garbage, we give some garbage, I'm sorry. If we get in stuff that's not top quality, that's what we make it out of. Whereas some of the commercial guys only accept, right? They're very more strict and won't accept. We we don't, we don't say no garbage. So it's, so Joe's point, she's correct. It's not probably equal on comparison.
So yeah, so we sort of, you know, it's a little like caveat with it, like disclaimer, but.
Yeah.
And you have to pay it up yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the last couple of years, our product has been really well. It's been really good. We've had good stuff come in. We've had a lot of storms, which helps, not because of Bart.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in the next storm.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, I'll be out, I'll be out here by then. But we have a lot of, you know, hardwood that actually helps the product. And the last couple of years, we've had a lot of big storms and we've had a lot of trees, which is the best thing to make mulch from. So it is dependent on what we bring.
Alright.
Well, we have a master fee schedule. We set those numbers every year at the organization meeting. So we have an opportunity to take it all.
Yes, yeah.
Seems like something to consider.
Yeah.
Did you have one more?
The uh the other quick question was for the the metal, scrap metal. Did people, did we market that enough? Because that seems like it also could be a good generator of dollars.
Yes, we make money off the scrap metal. Our scrap metal is brought to brick fields, so.
No, my question is, did we market it enough? Because I don't even know, and I've been doing this for eight, nine years, what I can bring and what I can't bring. For scrap metal, like what constitutes scrap? Is it, is it a can? Is it like ball dirt? You know, is it?
The only different, like anything that's metal in your house, a a metal pan would do. Metal cans would go with the coming of plastics. That that's separate. But anything outside of that and your metal you have in your house, if it's eighty percent metal, it could be recycled in the scrap metal.
Yeah, I know that SAP is also.
So a washer dryer, like residents call them, they have a washer dryer and I I get the washings, rations, they leave the curbside, well they throw in the trash, or they could bring it to recycling center and it will be recycled.
Yeah, I think to Jeremy's point, I don't think people know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe still make more effort.
Um I I I think that would be great.
Well, I think that's, you know, the SAP, they have to call that out.
Yeah, we should do that.
Yeah, we should.
So, yeah, I mean, you're working on the the annual schedule right now and one of the things that goes in there is SAP doesn't insert flyers in there. So maybe.
I'm I'm at it, I'm at it.
Focus on that.
So thank you.
Yeah, let me, let's work on that.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, like I said, I knew um it's the um dumping at the bags. And maybe we can just market your department a little better.
Love to hear it. More than more than ever.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, man. Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
You too.
Good work.
Hi, DPW administration.
What is, just what is the page?
Page thirty-seven.
We should all let you tab the pages for us. You offered, you offered. Is after tab three.
After page three. After page three.
After tab three.
Well, it is in order, I saw that one. Yeah. That wasn't helpful?
It was.
Page one oh five on the PDF.
Everything carefully should flow. Now I put refuse in front, so Nicole could go and put everything below there. Um so uh page thirty-seven is the public works administration. Um that covers the offices. Myself, Tom, Giulia, we also have Mark, who's full-time employee, and we have a part-time receptionist as well. So this is mostly salary. And there are some items for book subscriptions, conferences, travel, and G I S maintenance. That covers the program that we use in our office for um tracking all of our work orders. It's a software program called iWork. And the cost for that program is broken up among DPW administration and the water and highway budgets. And I don't think it's not in here, but it's in the water budget, but I'll mention it now. So we had retirement earlier this year in water. That was somebody who did the water billing. And um so we have an open position. So we just uh to replace that person. And uh that person, I think, is gonna sit over at DPW.
Yeah.
Um so uh in the meantime, uh we have been uh pretty stressed in our office trying to cover all of this. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll get some good candidates to interview soon.
Doesn't wait for the test to be taken or something?
No, there's a, there's a list, Lauren, that's uh, are we gonna certify it to send us the list or?
Oh.
Yeah, we have the list and then we have to wait two weeks to give people time to respond. So I think today is the deadline to after.
Yeah, we we've already canvassed, right?
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, we sent the letters in.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we got at least one response.
Do it.
Yeah, we, about three people interested.
Okay.
So we say okay.
Oh, good. I was worried it was gonna take you long for your rating for the test or something.
No. Are there any questions on the DPW administration? Nope. Not to move into uh buildings and grounds. It's page thirty-nine. Just a couple pages left. And this covers the the maintenance of uh town hall uh building. You'll see under the uh elevator maintenance, that's the most significant increase. And that's just because the the elevator in the building is uh is getting bigger. Requires more maintenance cost to keep it going.
So that's just gonna pull up every year until you have to replace it, yeah.
Until we have to.
What what's the life cycle of an elevator like that?
Uh it can be pretty long, I would say, in thirty to forty years. The the elevator itself um can definitely uh be repaired and there's parts available. The one thing that we had an issue with was a controller. And that's electronic equipment that operates the elevator. And uh if that needs to be replaced, that's really a significant cost.
You said it can go thirty to forty years, but how old is this one already?
Uh it was upgraded, I think, around two thousand.
Getting old. It's, I mean, it's approaching the tail.
Yeah. Right.
We're going to see what happens to town hall.
It's, I mean, it's still a few years, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, it's it's something we keep our eye on, I think.
Right. So it's gonna depend, it's gonna affect long-term, long-term projects here.
Because maybe it's just.
Correct.
Never really be the answer.
Yeah. Okay.
But we have a maintenance contract and they they come inspected clearly to make sure that everything's operating as well as it should be. There's a line for office cleaning as well. There's a slight increase there and that's a contractual obligation. Uh we went out to bid last year and secured a new uh cleaning company. So they are beginning their second year with us now. That service has improved over the prior, um kind of that we have. In the special projects line, there hasn't been uh much money spent out of that this year, but the plan is to redo the bathrooms upstairs this year at town hall.
We did last year, we did the bathrooms downstairs, downstairs, and the one, and the staff office here.
And uh single office. Makes a huge difference.
Cause you said next year, the this downstairs.
This year, this year, yeah. So there's eighty
Sixty-five.
Eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this year.
This year's almost over.
Correct, yes.
So fewer projects are next year.
Yes, yes. So this is one of the things we're aware of. And this is, you know, the the building maintenance department is the task of handling many, many, many things. And sometimes it's a challenge to get them to um be able to complete some of these projects just because they have so much going on. So we are aware we're getting closer to the end of the year and has been pointed out. And we have the money and we wanna spend it and we wanna get it done. So even.
Once they start. So how how long will it take once they start?
Uh it's probably a month, four to six weeks, I would suspect. So even if we don't complete it entirely this year, we will make sure that um the money that we need for that is in cover um if if the project carries on to next year.
Once you issue a purchase order, it's effectively the budget will roll over. So whatever money we have to spend this year, we'll roll till next year to one that bills will be paid. So it will just add to the budget next year. We'll take it out of this year's budget, move it into next year. You'll see a column uh where it says adjusted twenty twenty-four budget across the top. It's the fourth column over. That's why there could be an adjustment in that line. Uh it could be because something was purchased at the very end of last year. We didn't receive it until this year, so the money rolls over to the following year.
Are the, these restaurants, will they be out of commission when you move down there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have, so the downstairs one is like, um so we have a ladies room, but we also have a family bathroom. Which is like the main, these are just the main room, but anybody can use it. And it's a single, I mean, handicapped accessible. So that bathroom will be available. We'll just end up sending people downstairs.
I just noticed, I see a lot of people come from the playground.
Yeah, so the ladies room gets are ridiculous, you know, tough traffic.
Yeah, they'll just have to walk downstairs. We'll put signs.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's it. They'll just walk around.
It'll be okay.
Great.
And so doing them in winter is our biggest time of the year, which is the playground year.
Alright, let's move on. Move on to bathrooms.
Alright, so the next page, page forty. Um that's the the salaries for the building maintenance department.
This is all contractual.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then down about two-thirds of the way through the page, you'll see train station maintenance, that's seventy-five hundred dollars. We do still have uh some maintenance responsibilities there. Uh the bathrooms are open to the public, so we still have some expenses. With those.
You've gotta jump in supplies, running out of, running out of paper, or is that a periodical?
Uh that's that's just uh basic supplies, yeah. And you'll see a hundred percent increase. And that's just because it went from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. And that's to to reflect what what they've actually been spending. So in twenty twenty-three, they spent fifteen hundred. Twenty twenty-two is almost a thousand. So that's kind of just a correction based on actual needs.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I just ask about the elevator?
Can I just ask about the elevator at the train station and the health of that? I noticed it was out of order for some time, which was hard for disabled individual I was with. So I'm just curious what the health of that elevator is.
That's under Metro North responsibility and.
They own that.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, I'm 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 happy to put in a call to them to ask them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I see you also have uniforms and boots here.
Yes.
You're on the same schedule.
Yes, correct. And then page forty two is. The Department Public Works Garage, this is also under the scope of the building maintenance department.
Was that healthy increase in that one?
Thirty percent, yes, yeah, that's due to the age of the building. The original Public Works Garage, I think, is from the nineteen fifties, there was an addition on it in the late nineteen eighties. Definitely could use some attention as well.
You're gonna go to general highway next?
Yes.
Next, we're gonna go to general highway, uh, forty two. Following on the PDF, it's one fifty three, otherwise it's page seventy four, one forty nine on the scientific report.
After tab three.
So under highway, there's there's three areas. The highway department, the roads, coercion, there's the central garage, which takes care of all of the equipment. And then there is the snow removal budget as well. On this page, you'll see. That the property taxes actually decline for this area. And then on the second page, about halfway down, you'll see the the state aid chips funds. There's four programs now with the state, there's the CHIPS. There's what they call EWR, extreme weather recovery, TOPS, pure potholes. And then pave New York and those four programs combined. We see at least four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Generally, it's a little bit more, but we always budget conservatively to make sure we don't exceed those numbers.
I just wanna. Just wanna clarify, you said there's four programs and they're all in that in line?
Correct, yes.
By the one, okay.
Chips was the first one, the other three programs have added incrementally over time, yeah, that's an awful number.
They're in the dot, dot, dot.
Bart, let me just point out too, that the actual year to date is is zero because we submit those requests in usually what, late third quarter or fourth quarter?
Yeah, so we have, Julia has them all prepared, we have to submit them by November eighth. Um, and those are completed after we finish our paving work, the majority of our paving work is already done. And we have to do pinecliff area next week. And one of the things that we need to submit with those applications for the CHIPS fund is a cancel check to the contractor. I believe the the check to them for the bulk of the work they they just did is going out now or shortly. Once we get that cancel check back, we'll have everything to submit those applications.
Well, what what's the reimbursement cycle?
It's quarterly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so by next quarter, you should actually get reimbursement from the state?
It is, sometimes it leads into the next year, it doesn't really matter, we accrue that back to twenty twenty four.
Okay, that's pretty quick.
Um, yeah.
For a reimbursement program.
Yeah, it is within a couple months, it's not it's not terrible.
That's that's really good.
Um. That's good, but but regardless of whether we actually receive it twenty four or not, it will be recorded in twenty four, that's. The auditors will recognize that as money received in twenty four.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Do do we know how much we're getting this year? How much we're gonna request, I know it's allegedly four twenty five, but. And if you don't know, Julia, you may follow up.
She may know.
No, that's okay, if you don't know, off the top of your head, you. It is, it's okay.
We're only planning to carry over about twenty five thousand dollars this year, last year we carried.
Right, remember that, yes, okay.
So and if if we don't use it all, you can carry that over.
Right, we don't lose anything.
Into the next year. Um, I generally carry over a a little bit to use that as a kind of a tool not to go over budget. When we do the paving, it's we pay per ton of asphalt material that's put in place. And and this is something that can vary up to ten percent based on our estimate and what's actually put down. So I use that as a means of ensuring I don't go over.
You're pretty good at estimating.
Yes, that's Tom.
Tom, you you don't miss by very much.
Thank you, Tom. How long have you been doing this?
Few years. Is that it for revenue?
Um.
I was just gonna ask about the fund balance.
Okay.
You guys are gonna increase the appropriation for next year?
Yep, so that um will be part, and I'll explain that as part of our overall discussion, but in the funds, we do need to increase the fund balance.
Okay.
We have throughout all the funds, and Jill mentions it in her uh, in her budget summary, that um. Unfortunately, to stay within the cap, that's something we had to do this year, we had some increases in the fire district, we had some increases with our liability insurance, increases with. Retirement costs, increases with healthcare costs, all of those were too much to fit within the tax gap. So we do have a really healthy fund balance. So you know, this is, I I always go back, I always say, what's a. A former board member used to tell me all the time, he used to ask, is it raining yet? Well, it's starting to sprinkle, so we're gonna use a little bit of our rainy day fund this year. And you know, when I go through the entire budget presentation, I'll show we still are maintaining a really healthy fund balance. Uh, right around fifty percent of our our operating expenses. And really, the minimum that you'd like to get to is fifteen percent, so we're about fifty percent. So we're still well above that minimum and and we're still above the threshold that Moody's will still consider a triple A operator, so.
Well, you know what I say about fund balance, keep it healthy.
I.
Healthy fund balance.
I don't like to release any of it and and.
It's huge to the fire.
Yes, I know.
Um, trust me, but we're hoping, uh, we're hoping this year is the last year of the increases. It looks like it is for the northern fire protection district is as that will start to level out and some of the other costs will level out. Retirement is actually expected to trend downward the following year. Uh, but unfortunately, that that kind of spikes with the, and we're segueing a little bit, with a um. The defined benefit plan that we have, the the retirement plan knows how much money they need to pay out and they know how much money they have. So when they're short of that, the burden falls back to the municipalities. So it's been a volatile couple of years in the in the market for the investments of the retirement system.
It's literally in.
I don't think they have realized the return on investment that they were expecting to receive, so unfortunately, the burden falls to us, so.
They're always a little too optimistic with that.
I I I would prefer, and my method is a is a flatter, smoother, more consistent, I'd rather go up two or three percent every year than go up ten percent one year and go down two percent another year.
That's right.
Um, that's not how they do it, so.
It's a little challenging for having.
It is, yeah, but.
Fortunately, fortunately, there's a healthy fund balance.
Yeah, but back to your original question, we do have a nice fund balance. When I did the third quarter presentation a couple of weeks ago, we are on trend to use um. To either show a surplus or use less fund balance than was allocated in the twenty four budget, so we're we're in a good fund.
I just expect it to be a little bit higher for the upcoming upcoming years.
Yeah.
Next page, after that, we get into the expenses for the highway department. So you'll see in in salaries that we actually went down a little bit this year and that's for next year. And that's because we had a retiring resignation this year. When the new employees start, they start that they'll step on in a five step cycle, salary line is is down slightly.
Staffing remains the same, right, yes.
And the same explanation for the longevity gap as well.
Yes.
So when we replace with a new employee, they don't get a longevity gap for the first five years.
Right, Lauren, we talked about that at the end of the night?
And then part time help, um, we we spent lower than we had budgeted and that's because we've had challenges finding part time seasonal workforce.
Sorry, I mean, I have to say, how come I don't get longevity pay?
You do, it's funny. Well, let's talk about that later.
In the departmental equipment line. There's a a decrease there, last year the the budget had increased and that was to fund the purchase of a a hot box that we use for paving potholes and asphalt repairs. Especially during the the wintertime. There are no vehicles expected to be purchased for highway next year. And I just wanted to point out, Tom as well, keeps track of our vehicle replacement schedule diligently. And so for next year, we are planning to purchase a pickup truck in our water department, when we get to the water fund, you'll see. Fund request for that. Um, and and we are doing pretty well overall, but there are some pieces of equipment where we we defer to purchase. Um, on the life expectancy, one of them, we have listed in the capital project as a possibility in the future is the VACO for the water department, that's fifteen years old. What we have for the general life expectancy, some of these, you know, we can push out a year, two, or three.
Can you quantify in any way what a new garage will do in terms of the expectancy of the vehicles and maintenance costs to it and quantify the benefit it will save? Well, does that doesn't state the obvious, it keeps something inside, it's gonna last longer than it left outside?
Right, yeah. And that can be done, and I believe that was done in the public use report that was prepared for the eminent donation.
Yeah, we will, that will be done again, so, yeah.
Probably would be done again.
I guess we'll find out very soon.
Yes, yeah, but you you did definitely expect, you know, two or three years of life expectancy, a piece of equipment that's kept inside, for sure. And so the 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 back truck that we just ordered, that's a very specialized piece of equipment. And everybody that we spoke with, neighbor, community, around that that has one, they they keep it inside.
Good, cause it costs how much?
It's over six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we keep it inside, we'll keep it inside.
Yeah, well, well, currently, we do not have a have a space inside currently.
Hi, Jeremy's.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay. How are we doing on time, Rob? Good guy.
I think we're fine, I think we're, I think we're gonna be reasonably early today because when we headed the very end preliminary budget discussions. A lot of times, there will be. Uh, maybe differences in what the department has asked for and what the administrative request was. And we don't have any of those today where we might say, uh, somebody requested an additional employee and then I would have to show you what that would do to the budget. And we don't really have any of those discussions, so you know, we have a brief executive session, but I think we're doing fine on that.
It's hard to tell from them, I just wanna make sure we keep moving.
Yeah, no, I can tell how Bart's moving and I think where we are, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, you take care of it. All right.
And now, so the road paving, that means that one million dollars in in the paving line.
But that's not actually what we spend in eighty.
No, so further down, you'll see there's a permanent improvements line.
Two whole.
Two pages in it. And that's the four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar expense that offsets the the funds we receive from CHIPS. And we've been using most of that for paving as well. This year, we also will be using small portion of that to replace some some drainage plants.
Yeah, but generally, we're at about one point four when it comes to to our painting budget, yeah.
Yeah, when we talk about that in some of the financial reports, that's the number that we quote is those two budget lines combined.
Yeah, I didn't want anyone to walk away thinking.
Thinking we're on twenty million dollars of paving, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that a lot.
Yeah, only, only.
Only, yeah, I know.
There's a slight increase in the drainage materials. That's just due to rising costs. And then on page eighty, we get into the fifty one thirty lines, this is for the highway equipment maintenance, which is our central garage. And you will see some increases throughout the next couple of pages here. The salaries, that's two point five percent, that's contractual. Under departmental equipment. There's sixteen thousand five hundred dollars budgeted for equipment and the majority of that is to purchase a new machine. That serves as the air conditioning on new vehicles, so there's a new refrigerant. Um, and thus, we need a new machine to use to extract the refrigerant from the vehicle. And when they have to take the air conditioning equipment apart, which is more frequent these days, um, the way things are put together. You have to take a lot more apart to get to certain things and then they put it all back together, special equipment is needed to recharge the air conditioning.
How often do they change the?
The refrigerant?
Yeah.
Um. It it really, it varies, I mean, we had R twelve for a long time and then they came out with another one. And that one seemed to be probably like less than ten years and now we got another one. And it's, they're trying to get more green with them because they are harmful for the environment.
So it's possible every few years.
Yeah. I don't. So in in the lines below, you'll see increases in the departmental supplies, maintenance and repairs. Vehicle maintenance and repairs, tires. And then on the next page, oil, grease, lubricants, solvents. And and those are all. Just increased cost that we're we're seeing to acquire these things that we need to keep up with.
And again, the liability case, Rob, that's the spreading of it through the margins.
The next page, page eighty two. Have safety equipment at the top. And then below, we have brush and tree work. And this year, over the summer, we we issued a bid for tree removal work and we we have a new contractor. So we had some challenges with the the previous contractor completing the work on time. And things have been better with the with the new contractor, from a couple of months in, so we're we're hoping that Almstead continues. Did you see, they they did finally complete everything, you know, that was given to them.
That's where, if you look in the adjusted budget, where you look at that's almost a hundred thousand dollars over the original budget. That's because there was that much tree work at the end of twenty three that was un, we're not looking at that. That was uh, encumbered, was under a purchase order. So we changed the contract around this time to ensure more timely removal of the trees. Looks like we're trending that way so far.
Yes.
But we have finally closed out Almstead, as of yesterday, they cut down the last tree that they had remaining.
And then the pricing is more favorable for the town, the new contractor.
Even better.
Yes. It's one of the things that actually went down slightly.
But the the town does spend, I mean, a sizable amount of money in our budget on tree removal, so.
Yeah, I get the parks has a tree removal budget as well.
Yeah. As well, so this is not the only one, so.
Right, that that's another thing people get very concerned about.
Yeah.
All right, the the Ninkle Dam, Dock Pond Dams, those items are worth, the town engineer, they're on there.
And despite of that, that hurts. Ninkle Dam, yeah.
It'll be nice when that's when that's done. What's the timing on that? A couple of years?
Yeah, disappointing result.
I'm not looking at tree removal. Do you deal with the Department of Rec that deals with invasive of of hours? You know, you're talking about, like, for example, at the at Genny Park, there's trees that are just standing but are clearly.
Emeralds, yeah.
What's it called again?
The Emerald Ash Forest.
Is that something that you you deal with? Does rec deal with that? Who deals with?
I think Dennis identifies those, right?
Dennis.
And then what happens?
Then what do we do? We let them stay there until the tree is dead, so we don't move it?
If there's nothing we can do with Emerald Ash Forest, it's kind of like this bug.
But at some point, we take those down, do we?
If the tree is dead, yeah.
Okay, and is that in ICE's budget?
Those, yeah, if if they're in the parks, yeah, they would be in ICE's budget.
And the tree removal budget?
Dennis, regardless of whether it's in the highway budget or the parks, Dennis is the is the one that does the inspections, it tags them and knows some for.
And he keeps the natural list.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, this first payment goes that that's from the back end is irrelevant.
Yeah, where we charge them is, yeah.
There are, there's a lot of dead ash trees out there, yes, and the beach trees are down.
I believe between.
Yeah, and that, I mean, it's a, so a lot of those are not coming back.
Wow, okay. Alright, let's get going.
Yeah, I have to tell you, we we have been proactive about, um, you know, taking down the apparent dead trees around our our playing fields. But, you know, we we've got parks that have.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the trails too.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of open, open land.
Yeah. Problem.
Okay.
So at page eighty-three, that begins the fifty-one forty-two lines and this is for snow removal. Our our request for overtime is flat. Thankfully, the past couple of winters have been pretty mild. That definitely helps the highway budget when this happens. Don't know that we're gonna be so lucky this year, but we'll we'll see how it goes.
It's hard to predict this budget just because obviously we don't know how many storms we're gonna get and the intensity of the storms that we're gonna get. The numbers that we've included are a pretty good average over ten years if you look, so we win some, we lose some. Uh, and that's why there's fund balance. If we have a particularly bad year, we do have money to make up for it and to be able to clear our roads, but I I think, I think we do pretty good. More often than not, we're we're on target with this number.
So the the maintenance and repair has increased slightly and you'll see under contractual services, a fifty percent increase. Uh, there, that's used for GPS devices that we have at the lab trunks and we have expanded that.
Didn't we just switch over our GPS system?
Um, it's been almost a year already. Yeah, we switched from vehicle tracking solutions to Verizon. Page eighty-four, traffic, safety and maintenance. This is primarily for the line striping that's done on the roads. Um, in twenty twenty-three, the cost for this service more than more than doubled. If you look back, in twenty twenty-two was fourteen thousand and in twenty twenty-three it was over thirty-one thousand. Um, this year we've secured a new contractor for that service and then the price has gone down. It's still much more than it was in twenty twenty-two, but it's it's less than it was last.
That's not something you do in a house.
No, it's a very special truck that is set up just to destroy the roads. And, you know, they come here late for a couple of days, maybe nights. It wouldn't be worth it for us to have something that's only used in a couple of minutes. Pretty much wraps up the highway budget. Next page, there's a stormwater contractual. I think that's what they used in Pleasantville. That's the expense that we pay for Pleasantville.
The other stormwater amount was shown in the in the grievance budget.
Oh, great. So the increase is just um by contract with the East of Hudson or?
Yes, and yes, and that's based on a report of Fos.
The Fos, yes, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, so um in in future years, don't be surprised if you see um this budget line being affected by the MS four, you know, in the first.
Is this increase due to MS four or just ordinary?
No, I think this is just the ordinary, yes.
The ordinary or the business?
Of the run-of-the-mill process, you know.
Okay.
And we've been for most years, we've been reimbursed by the county. I know they never guarantee it when we are budgeting it. Um, and I don't know the status of twenty twenty-four yet, but um I know most years the county reimburses us, it isn't not.
Um, is that limited? The the reimbursement? Because I'm wondering if it goes up based on MS four. Is that a way to get?
No, I don't think.
No, they they're just reimbursing us the East of Hudson cost. It it wouldn't be for the entire.
There there's a limit?
But that's our portion cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Virginia.
Uh, there's no questions on that. We can go to the water budget, which starts on page one twenty-eight. So this page is just interfund revenue. On the next page, at the top, you see the the property taxes which have remained.
I'm sorry, Bart, I was looking at something else. What page did you say?
Through, uh, one twenty-nine. So there is a tax component to water budget, but that has remained flat for a long time. The majority of the revenue is from the the water sales.
Yeah, and I'll just mention that um there are few, very few of the um of the funds that have a significant revenue source like water does. So when the water budget goes up, we can increase the rates to reflect that and the people that are using more water are gonna pay for that as opposed to the property taxes. That way it doesn't have any impact on our tax cap. So that has just remained flat for every year that I've ever done the budget and probably before that too.
And so with the general water sales, irrigation of farms and landscaping is a is a major factor that that affects these lines. And that's weather dependent, so we we take our best guess here, but if it's a rainy year, these numbers will be down. If it's a dry year, it will be up and it's kind of again like the the winter that over a period of time, these are all average now.
Yeah, they typically do. And within a year, I mean, we've seen this year too, we had really dry patches this year, but I think the um the late spring and early summer was really wet and then as we got to the summer, everything dried out, so um, that's why we're, you know, if you look at the year-to-date actuals, they're somewhat low because we bill on a lag also. A lot of that revenue has not been billed yet and it will be typically, I think, October and November are the largest billing months of the year just because we bill on a lag and that would cover the summer water consumption. Bart, we we increased water rates this year, correct?
It was twenty twenty-three, last year was ten percent increase, so this year we did not increase.
We didn't increase them this year. Again, that's probably something that we would look at at the budget time next year to increase again with the amount of capital projects that we have. We are gonna, we are able to push the borrowing off to twenty twenty-five, which is great. Uh, but we do need to borrow money to complete some of these water projects. And with that's gonna come debt service and a probable increase in water rates. So we kept them flat in twenty-five, but in twenty-six, we'll we'll have to have that discussion, I think.
At the bottom, you'll see water service charges, that's down twenty-five percent. And that's fees we collect for for final weeds and those have gone down since the volume of house transactions, that's. On the next page, there's a line for hydrant rental and this is for the fire hydrants, a fee that's charged to Millwood Fire District and Chapel Fire District. And we have a five-year contract with them and that the fee for this goes up one percent every year.
What um what year we in that five-year agreement?
Either two or three.
We're both.
It's the second five-year agreement, where, no? Cause for a while we had.
We're both of them at the same time. I I remember at the beginning, they weren't exactly the same.
Um, there is a submission of the checkup on.
Yeah.
So later they know this.
Yeah.
Sale of taps, you'll see that's down. That's for new water connections. We had a very large increase back in twenty twenty-two, we were over a hundred thousand dollars and that's associated with the East Village Toll Brothers development. There were ninety-one taps that have all been completed for that development.
It's kind of like back to baseline now?
Yes. On the next page is the incorporated fund balance.
Yeah, we have typically the fund balance in the water fund has been pretty high uh over the years and we actually reduced the allocation in uh in twenty twenty-five just based on the overall budget and where the shore call was. Especially in the water fund, that fund balance is is difficult to predict because, like Bart said, if we have a really dry summer and we bill for a lot of water, we won't use any of that fund balance or maybe less than we had allocated, so it it's kind of a placeholder there in the water budget. That's really one of the more volatile budgets in in the entire budget.
On the next page, the revenue continues. See the the costs from Pleasantville. And this is for fixed and for variable. So Pleasantville is part owner in the Millwood Water Treatment Plant and each year at the beginning of the year, we go through the budget and there's a list of items associated with just keeping the lights on at the plant and making sure it's staffed and those are all attributed to the the fixed costs. And then the variable costs are for the raw water, the electricity and the chemicals that are required to treat that. And those can go up and down based on the volume of water that's produced. On the next page are the salaries for the water department employees. And those are down slightly just due to a resignation and then hired another employee in step one. So we had a a drop in the departmental equipment line and that's due to a large purchase that we were able to avoid and bringing that line back down to where it's traditionally been. And the vehicle line, there's forty-five thousand dollars as for one pickup truck.
When you say you were able to avoid a large purchase, that from like some of the work that you've been able to do with maintenance or repairs?
Um, this was actually for a a piece of equipment and then we have an air compressor. And so we we were able to bring it back to the original equipment manufacturer and they did an overhaul on it. It's been working very well for us now. I thought we were gonna have to replace it. On page one thirty-four, near the top, the second item down is the cost of water excess per capita. And did request to drop that slightly because we have been trending down with that. This is a fee that we pay to the New York City DEP for the raw water. Um, the way that they calculate the rates for us is they they take the amount of water that they use each month and divide by the number of residents in New York City and they come up with a per capita. So per person gallons per day rate is typically around a hundred and twenty gallons a day per person. Um, and then they know our population and every ten years when census comes out and is redone, we have to go through the process with DEP to um update that number for the population. So they take the amount of water that we use and especially in the summer when we're we're doing irrigation, our our average gallons per day per person is significantly higher than what it is in the city, so they charge us an excess rate for that water. So that's what this line.
And that's one of the reasons that we have a tiered system. We have a three tiers for water billing. So if you're just an average, if you're a couple or a a small family, you're gonna probably be billed at the lowest rate, below six thousand cubic feet in a quarter. And then we have a range six to ten thousand cubic feet and then above ten thousand. You probably wouldn't hit that above ten thousand unless you were irrigating, filling a pool or had a really big family.
Yeah, those of us who have read that resolution are very aware. That's that's a very painful one.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, it's very detailed. It it explains it really well.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Or a leak, right?
Yeah, or a leak, yeah.
Yeah.
So the the tap materials you see is down twenty percent. And that's again because the large increase of new water taps has been completed. Most of these other lines are flat. There's an increase in maintenance or repair line and building maintenance. And this, at the bottom, the contractual services line here, this is paid for. Each year we have a company come in, just do their leak detection. Now they're called GPRS and we do a a survey of the entire water system to look for leaks. It's been tremendously helpful in keeping our our water at a most great state.
Those are the folks who go around at night when it's quiet, yeah.
During the time. Yes. Um, also out of this line, we pay land use fees to New York City DEP. On the next page, you'll see here the the increases for vehicle. On the next page, you'll see here the the increases for uh, vehicle maintenance and repair that we've seen throughout. Also an increase for gasoline. And at the bottom for the liability insurance. Page one thirty-seven against the eighty-three thirty lines and these are all for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The bottom section here, it says VCP bill is for variable costs for Pleasantville. And that's for the water treatment chemicals, the electric. Quoting back up, that's uh, electrical cost for the anyone pump station. And for storage disposal and for the raw water. And these are um, estimates that are based on the five-year uh, history of what's typically used by the village of Pleasantville. On the top of the next page.
I have a question. There's been a lot of rebuilding in Pleasantville. Has that affected um, get a water usage in uh, with with regards to uh, all new housing?
I would say their water uses up a little bit.
Yeah, okay. That's baked into your already?
No, it just details compared towers.
I mean, yeah, so for example, like they never used any access per capita at all and now they do. For many years they.
And Rob, these are costs that they're released with uh, Pleasantville quarterly?
Yes.
So Rob has separate meetings with uh, Eric Morrisey, um, and the Pleasantville team to take and true up the uh, the numbers with Pleasantville to make sure that uh, you know, our best things is on topic.
But in our, you know, our contract with for the ownership of the water treatment plant, there's an allocation um, of the uh, well, well. On uh, page one thirty-nine. Uh, near the top, you see ozone system maintenance, that's down ten percent and that's because uh, the three ozone generators at the water treatment plant have been rebuilt. We were doing one per year and they have all been completed. The line below that standby generator service, that was for the uh, rental generator that we had while we were waiting for the new generator. So that rental generator was uh, removed from the site in June. Back loss is down substantially. And also at the bottom, this special projects line, you'll see a a sharp decline in that. We're uh, working on updating the skate and control. It's at the water treatment plant, that's been a two-year project and that should be completed this year. And that's pretty much closes out the water font. If there's any other questions on that. Debt service.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, great.
Stand if you want to do any of the lighting districts or the sewer districts. They're all pretty much.
They're all pretty standard, yeah. And our our board has an interest in going uh, budget by budget for the special districts, but most of the sewer districts um, comprise either debt service or a small amount of uh, O and M costs each year. Those budgets haven't changed significantly. We have now eight sewer districts.
Nine.
Is it?
We're we're in S nine, but we don't have an S eight, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I think.
Everyone else don't start yet, no questions?
I think.
Jen, do you have any um, any other questions on um, on reward sewer? Cause Bart would be in a position to give a little bit more detailed answers if he did.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sorry.
No, I I I've been listening and learning. I don't have well-formed questions, but I'm.
No, no, just wanted to know regarding rewards specifically, if you have any other questions.
Oh, 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 oh.
Bart's in a, you know, Bart would be in a position to.
Okay, well, I, you know, I just saw it on the um, on the sheet for Tuesday night and asked about it and I thought the answer made sense. So um, I don't really have any further questions about it.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, but we're still in uh, preliminary budget time. So if anyone has any questions, you could always talk to Rob or reach out to Bart, I'm sure. You know, we could still get our questions answered.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, with any of the other, we have a parking district and a lighting district and neither are up. I I think they're basically flat in both of those districts. And of the parking districts, the increase with the liability insurance because we do charge that to that district. So there was a a small increase there. It's a small uh, proportionment. The lighting district, I think uh, I think we actually brought that down just a little bit because the uh, based on the actual electricity costs over the last couple of years, we were.
We installed the lights with LEDs, so we knew the.
Yeah, so we saw a big credit the other year come in. So uh, and then uh, I think we have a, we have two drainage districts and I think those are just uh, debt service that are paid back.
With the parking district, all the new signs that Christina put in the parking line with kind of.
I think she charged those to her line to the fifty-six, the A fifty-six fifty.
Oh, did she? Okay.
In the clerk's office, um, not to the district itself. So um, and uh, you have Hyridge and Two Castles Water Districts, two very small water districts. Um, that again have very few changes and that's something. Certainly, anything else that you thought you should highlight on the special district?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks guys so much. You guys did a fabulous show.
Yes, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I make it look so long. We know it's not.
Not long, I'd love to.
Yeah, so can we do ride-alongs?
Oh, sure.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I'd love to do that.
How do we, how do we get on that list?
Uh, when it's gonna snow?
An email.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I don't know what ride-alongs are. What are ride-alongs?
Oh, you guys are riding in the um, in the snowplow.
Oh, that sounds fun. Sign me up.
Okay.
I'm into that.
Jeremy's highly recommending it.
Okay, I'm into that.
Okay.
I'll bring the hot chocolate.
Oh, yes, okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work and organizing all of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
I did a ride-along when I was with my prospects and I was, you ever go ride along with?
I actually didn't.
I didn't have, my buddy and my, to my classmates, they were on the side. They, when they got involved, not when they got involved, a rookie, they got involved.
They got to go to the scene?
They got, yeah, because they were like, like, how fun is that?
Time.
Not for the person who was deceased, but like, if you're into long-term.
I'm in DDPs. The whole two hours.
Two hours of dance.
Yeah, exactly.
Though I didn't realize how much elevator should smell like urinals.
Oh.
Cause when you're going to these places.
In the hallways.
Yes, it's like.
Yeah. Lovely.
So, did you um, did you let the chief know?
No.
Cause we're a little ahead of time.
A lot ahead of time.
Yeah.
Um, so actually, you know, maybe it was a good time for us to go to uh, executive session.
That's a question.
We were going to do that before the chief. Yeah, so. Yeah.
Were you gonna have the chief in that exact session?
Um. Well, we're gonna, we were going to do it prior. Right, um.
You might just have to call Jen then because this is live stream or.
Um, um. Yes, so what would we do? We would just put us on mute and then call Jen? Jen, we were gonna break into executive session, um, but we're, we're gonna have to just sort of pause this um, you know, this connection.
Okay.
So Lauren can mute the room, so.
Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna give you a call.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have the correct number to call Jen?
Just yourself, right Jen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so give us a couple of minutes to get ourselves together, okay?
Okay, alright.
Perfect.
Okay, bye.
Alright, um. So Lauren, can you, you, we're muted on this?
Not yet, you just have to adjourn to go into executives.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss uh, personnel matters?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, welcome back. We're back in exec session. And we are here with uh, Chief of Police Jim Carroll to go over the police budget. Rob, do you wanna say anything before we introduce this?
Nope.
Uh, just welcome to the chief and Lieutenant Rocco. Uh, chief has one of the larger individual budgets, not quite as big as uh, SDPW, but uh, a lot of budget lines to cover, so. Turn it over to you.
You save the two anyways.
We are, we're ready that early morning.
And I got my, I got my backup.
And thanks for printing this separate.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, so the first page is just our organizational chart, which may have seen. Then the second two are the um, golden objectives. The third page go goes into our, a breakdown overall of our budget and individual lines. Well, what I did in doing, I think kind of much best about the fifth page is when you see this um, this form, it just goes back to breaking down contractual um, budget lines and non-contractual budget lines. So some of them I, I have no controls and some of them I do, so we do look at it and it's like. And we got that. So the contractual lines, the difference between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And my figures, I'll show you the overview of it and then if you want to go into specific lines, we can backtrack to it. And the non-contractual lines, um, anything um, in bold is an increase. Anything uh, in red is a decrease and everything else is stayed the same. So um, for example, vehicles, you know, they've got office and that's just the type of vehicles we're purchasing, whether I do an admin car versus um, a regular patrol car. And 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 it's awesome, everything going on. First aid and equipment, that's everything is more expensive. And some of the lines like, you know, were like uh, decent um, vehicle maintenance and gasoline, we just try to make a more realistic picture of that stuff that's been costing us for the past three years.
Thank you.
So, you know, we had budgeted fifty in the past and the rather low guy is more like sixty and that's just definitely more expensive, cars are more expensive.
Is that because of an accident or accidents that that's just the natural order of things?
I think it's more in the natural order of things. It's more, yeah, it's been increasing, 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 so.
We've seen that.
We've had, yeah, overall, so um, and lease and maintenance, that was a big, big jump, but we also, first time we added GPS to our vehicles. And um, we actually, you know, I drove that in my budget and it's been very, very beneficial for us, yeah. And the the sheet after that is just a um, a vehicle replacement plan. Which is, has to be fluid because accidents happen and you, you know, cars fail or, you know, cars, you know, get torn out or but it's a, it's an overview and, you know, we try to keep it in a consistent, you know, range.
It's great to see that you have a long-term plan. Great to see that.
Um, any questions on these initial?
On the vehicle replacement plan, um, the numbers that are uh, they're all the same. Does that not, I mean, I assume they're gonna get more expensive here.
They are, they are, but I don't know what to do. So I always just start at like current cost.
Okay.
So, but it's definitely gonna be a built-in range. Yeah, I think they probably went up
Yeah.
eight grand from last year.
We know we can do so that the projected
Right.
rate of inflation, whatever that, yeah.
So we're going to run this down and then future budget.
Maybe whatever the powers that be are predicting, so you can
Yeah, yeah.
butt of that, yeah.
Yeah, I was just pointing out that, you know, that's
Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty seven, twenty seven is not, it's not gonna be the same as last year's, you know?
Oh, that's twenty one. It's not gonna be.
Right, I mean, I I just can, I could do ten percent a year and, you know, reach down like that, but just I guess it's an overview of what mine replacement plan is versus the dollar.
Yeah.
Just like generally about three a year, right?
Yes. Yeah, and 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 it fluctuates. Like it could be three patrol cars, it could be, you know, one admin and two patrol cars, it could be a civilian car and, I guess it just depends on the. And then um, the next sheet is the breakdown of the um, civilian release. Which is, it's high, excuse me. Because I, I still have two vacant EVO positions, so you'll see like I've been bold. Um, back there's an eighteen-two and eighteen-two for two civilians. But I haven't been able to fill them. I've had a hard time, a tough time being full-time staff really, but.
Wow.
So.
Is that civil service?
It's not, it's not civil service, so.
Sorry, it's not?
It's not civil service, it's not civil service.
Yeah, even twenty dollars an hour, we can fill it.
We can't fill it. We get them for a little while and then maybe not.
So which role is this for?
Um, so, so if we, yes, part-time CSW vacant, part-time PEO vacant, twenty dollars an hour, eighteen, eighteen-two each, so thirty-six thousand. I don't think I'll use. I use one of them, I'll be great, you know, for for half a year. We've just really had a hard time.
Well, the younger guys typically wanna be police officers.
That's physical, so the marks that too.
So they come in, they get the, you know, yeah, they they wear the uniform and they like it and they get a little experience and then they go someplace.
Or they're on the list to get into police academies.
Is that the nature?
Just the nature, yeah. Same thing with our, like, our CSWs and in the past, we've lost them, question to other police departments or combat or, you know, also, so.
So this must happen throughout.
I think it's just the nature. And it's not just us, it's law enforcement in general, that keeping parking enforcement officers is 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 a challenge. And, you know, it's not fun.
It's a tough job.
They see that, yeah, no, they they get a lot of.
Directly traffic and ride and take. You guys have all seen those like parking mors.
Yes.
Parking mors, you should see like they they, like they brush them with their cars as they, you know, drive by.
Yeah, but consistently, like, you know, salaries have just increased overall, um, and I but everything else is right where it should be. Um, that's, that's. Where I'm at. You have any specific questions? I'm happy to ask. Lieutenant Rocco is happy to take the.
Lieutenant Rocco, was there anything you'd want to point out?
Uh, chief said it all.
See, he's good, right? So I, my, my general question is, how are we in terms of. So I my my general question is, how are we in terms of long-term looking at, you know, vests and firearms and body cameras and storage devices? Is there anything in the, let's say, viable horizon that we're looking at of of the budget expense?
So so there is, so vests are in here, actually. Um we have a a bulletproof grant, oh, what kind of those replace, five years?
Right, that's my, that's my question, so where are we on these things?
Around five years. So every five years and and it's projected already for next year that we we actually budget every year for the replacement vests for the five or seven vests and then go out and we get fifty percent reimbursement from the state on them, so so that's already included, that that's solid, um.
So what what's, I don't remember now, is there firearm replacement too?
Um we did that about
Couple years ago.
six years ago, so.
What is it, six years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, it's a.
Yeah, it's.
So what is one is a new one, what is a new? Something, there's these things that we budget for in advance?
Yeah, these these guns are are
Are everything.
bulletproof, if that's the right word, like your locks, you just, they just made to work, so so we're okay there. Would I look to see an upgrade in like be like, you know, different sights or, you know, name point system on, yeah, but next couple of years for that. Body cameras, we we had that conversation during police reform. And the idea behind that was that the state came out with some kind of um system to house the storage, that maybe we think about it, but maybe something wanna talk about. If that's a more decision.
Um are there any grants out there for that kind of? Usually when the when the state wants there to be action on something, they put some money attached to it and entice us.
Right.
There hasn't, there hasn't been.
I mean, the cost for that is the storage, right?
Storage.
Yeah.
It's storage.
Right, especially with discovery, I mean, you everything has to be.
Yeah, it's just.
Storage. Um I think it's coming down, it has been coming down.
The cost.
The cost.
Of the storage or the the actual amount of everything?
Sure, everything.
But we're we're wanting the state to provide this storage, yeah.
That was the idea in the past.
Well, because then you don't have to worry about this, you that your standards are different with somebody else's standards are uniform across the the state and
Fun storage. Right.
Yes. Right. Right.
It sort of eliminates that um that problem for us.
Is it a capital project discussion?
It it might be, I mean, depending on what the cost is.
And how long do they last the cost?
I don't know, going far enough down that road.
I I I don't know, I mean, because there's better and better, a newer achiever for cameras, so it's that seems. So I am going to a chief's conference this weekend, I think he needs some more.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm curious what is what 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 on the horizon cost we might expect of law enforcement in the next five, six, seven years
Yeah.
I don't think we will. Yeah.
That we should start thinking about.
Yeah. I was thinking it was you know, for the full system, like, you know, taser camera, body camera, camera on your gun was, you know, like five hundred a month per guy, you know, so it's not cheap, but it's expensive.
Wow.
Yeah, expensive.
Wow.
But I got a better idea, I I'll definitely reach out to him this weekend. I think it's somewhere we need to go eventually, but.
It would be nice to know like what other technologies.
It's 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 it's, I think, you know, it's it makes everybody workout.
Right.
Right.
As a prosecutor and a criminal defense attorney, it's going bad, but that's, yeah, it is what it is, it's evidence.
Correct.
But I do think like if you're on film, every day is better.
Frankly, everybody should be assuming that they're on film.
At this this stage age, that's right, every cameras everywhere, rain, whatever it is.
Everybody's on film all the time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually had a couple of First Amendment orders, who've had, you guys saw them.
No, no.
So, yeah, oh yeah, they read um Sweet Greens, what's it called, Green, Huppin?
Sweet Green?
Sweet Green, yeah, chocolate frosting, yeah.
Yeah.
Chocolate frosting.
Chocolate frosting, yeah, so so they had a First Amendment order was up there, a couple of them filming people inside Sweet Greens and uh people were not happy and they called us and officers went up there and did a fantastic job as far as I'm concerned with them.
Yeah, I agree, they risked, they leave the premise, but it is the business's decision.
Right, right, wow.
So again, another example of being on camera all the time and then they came in and no one make a complaint event, only officers and sergeant on the desk can, well, very comfortable, exactly.
Yeah, sorry, traffic.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Again, like you said, if he's on camera.
Great.
You also have some videos.
Yeah.
I only got the goats in the road on the patrol.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, I love goats.
I love that, I love that, you said that, you know, you said that.
Why is that?
Someone branded dry.
Branding dry.
It wasn't us, they weren't they weren't our fat and sassy goats, it was the uh
Yeah. How'd you get?
It was on Facebook.
You get it, alright, I got the people.
Neighbors, it it was from the the neighborhood, the neighborhood ladies were upset that their flowers were being eaten by the fat and sassy goats in town.
He's got. Oh, okay, I shouldn't have laughed about it.
You didn't see?
Of course he did, it's my Newcastle PD does a lot, I love they just take a run with it.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's okay. My mom.
Flowers come back, yeah.
He was hurting that.
It was great, it was a show, like, you know, that's.
He was hurting. Exactly, he was leaving, and there was a lot of goats.
It was a lot of goats.
Yeah, it was adorable though, I love them.
It was so adorable, I have to try to.
Who said bad boys, bad?
Just, you know, in everyday occurrence.
And then somebody said like, um, what are they, and somebody's like, are you kidding?
I wasn't sure if they were dogs or goats or not.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like using social media for good.
Um so maybe the twenty twenty six budget can be to put it up again, that.
Wow, I mean, that's a, that's a huge, if that's five hundred dollars a month
Let me get a better.
per officer times forty officers, that's
It's a lot of.
A lot.
Goat.
I mean, they're, yeah, sure.
And there's probably different patterns, right?
We're never gonna have that kind of money in the next, yeah.
Well, maybe there's grants, like, let's look into it, let's see.
Let me, let me do my research this weekend for it, you know, I didn't know it was on.
Maybe in twenty twenty six, the cost comes down.
In kind of like, like during police reform, it kinda got pushed back, like it wasn't, that group was not in favor of it at the time, but maybe it's something
Maybe.
Times have changed, right?
Um maybe we could reach out to uh Assemblyman Burden, he's always so tremendously helpful, and just find out whether or not there's any grants coming down the pipe or if it's on the legislative agenda for next session and
Yeah, good ideas.
Just to look.
My motorcycles are moving forward.
That's great.
That was gonna be one of my questions.
Yeah, so so yeah, I was, I mean, there was some money there based on how we lost a vehicle and but I think I ran into Senator Harkam at a at a fundraiser for something else and he's like, I have money, I'm like, oh, for what?
We'll take it.
He's like, I'm like, I need motorcycles, we can do that.
Always on the top, too.
That's it, that's it.
So you 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 have motorcycles in the fleet now.
We have two, but they're really fifteen, eighteen years old, so.
So my question was, are they on this
They're not.
list at all, so.
Oh, they're probably, they are not on my retirement list, thank you.
I I am.
Kill my retirement list.
Sorry, um I I actually don't know enough about cars and stuff, 'cause we're for sure it wasn't there, so.
No, it's a good. They're not there, they're not there and they they probably should be, um, but yeah, they're about thirty thousand pieces of equipment.
So how many did we think we were gonna get?
And then. We have, we have two and they both need to replace and I was, but I was probably, I was gonna budget for them to replace one this year, next year and the one the year after, but with this coming from Mark, I don't have to.
Right. Great.
I shouldn't have to, um and then they should be good for another ten years.
That's probably why you didn't really prioritize putting it down.
Definitely.
Okay. Any other questions, chief? Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thanks a lot. Great, alright, awesome, I can.
Enjoy your conference.
Enjoy.
Yes, I enjoy it. Thank you both.
We have a lot of time like taters and cameras.
Yeah, I'm gonna write to uh to Ms. Parker and Burden's office and just find out, I I'm just curious to whether or not.
Yeah. More and more people are going to, but they're almost in.
Going to, going to what?
That's why I'm saying.
Cameras.
Cameras.
On the firearms.
Or cameras, of all, actually, you know.
So there's a camera on the firing?
I know somebody does it, I suspect they go off, the other is T sub five, so there's one on your body camera, right, there's one on a taser, deployed taser, and one if you actually
And you don't have to go all three, right? The body camera would probably cover it all, it should cover it all.
Should cover, well.
I would say, as you're leaving out of here, before, I've seen this great video that actually circulated, if I can still find it, it's the the ang- two different angles of a shooting and one, it looks like the police are just opening fire on this guy and then the other angle, you see that the guy take his firearms, start shooting backwards like this, and then the police respond and it's two separate angles, two se- and you would have two totally different results if you didn't see, I have the video somewhere, but it's it's phenomenal, the value of the of the cameras is especially multiple angles, um it's incredible.
Are we, is it five or is it?
Yes.
We're like.
Yes, five.
Um there was discussion during police reform that our community may not want cameras because you're to see people out there working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, that's.
And that that was actually the.
But that's okay, it is, it's what it is, I'll pay that.
But that's the accountability factor, that's the accountability factor.
They're 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 pros and cons though.
They're 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 pros and cons and and what I did was I just provided the pros and cons and the actual um
Consideration. They're always.
invested people made the decision.
Right.
So that's something that was a consideration back then, but to me, it's like, I think you're right, I don't know.
Yeah, that was, that was interesting, I I had forgotten that that point, but that that was it, and once that came up in the conversation, that was it, because you really don't want
That was. That's. Yeah.
The point is that you don't want people shutting the cameras off.
But they should.
They have, they have to, they have to sit on.
The policy, the policy.
So when you're responding to like a domestic or something like that.
You know, if you're.
Are the homeowners, so the the people that are responding to wanna be.
Right.
Probably have.
Well, I I I didn't given point in time, you'll be talking to different people who have different opinions on this issue, especially. So, you know, I I'm not so sure that the opinions of, you know, a certain number three, a handful of people at a certain point in time should be determinative of such a such a large issue that has so many pros and cons to it and.
Yeah.
Even the community makeup is not the same as it was.
I agree with you, I think I I think the mindset though has changed too about them and and with all of your cameras and then being on it and
Right. Well, it's it's been very helpful, you know, on on civil rights issues and um.
And, you know, and I think. And I think it, everybody is is better, which is, I mean, sad, but it's true.
Yeah.
You, but at the end of the day, to get people, you know, everybody behaving better, all the
Agree.
all the.
Yeah. Can I just ask about confidentiality with any videos that are captured, I mean, you know, people at their worst are not gonna get humiliated unless for some reason it needs to come to light, but it's protected, right? I mean, it's not like it can be aired like the goat video, I mean.
No, but it's.
Yeah, it's definitely, you could, it could be foiled, for sure.
Oh, it can be.
It's it's it's.
And and it's it's.
No, but during discovery.
Right, it's during the discovery, so.
It's gonna be out there. If un- unless maybe there's a child involved.
But we're not talking about, I mean, routine traffic stops, right, that's discoverable, but we're not talking about like a day-to-day interaction, we're talking about when there's criminal action, when there's a arrest, when there's
Right, cool, who's foiling you for?
Right, you you know, you ran through a pedestrian crosswalk, we're not gonna foil a a video for that, we hope not, we're talking about
This is a reason.
Yeah.
the circumstances when police are responding to a domestic call or there's some other criminality.
We we have had foils, people asking for all sorts of information on a third party's arrest and cultivation with the police.
Hmm.
And they have no apparent reason to, yeah, get that information.
Just like curiosity.
I guess, we don't have to ask why they want it.
antagonizing, perhaps.
Yeah, perhaps, but yeah, no, so, yeah, once it's captured, Jen, you know, it's it's out there.
Like any other, okay.
And the other side of that, it probably creates a a spot for an officer, like another officer is gonna be probably responsible just for that.
The managing of the cameras, yep, so to Rob's point, it's a very, it becomes at a very significant cost to the town, so in a long-term commitment, right?
Oh.
Okay. It's a very.
Yeah, oh, once you start it, you, that's it.
That's right, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're you're gonna need an officer dedicated just to.
I can think of other ways, I would like to spend some money for the police department.
Yeah. No, very much so.
That would, that would go a long way towards community safety, but that's just me.
Wonder what you're thinking.
Alright.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Way, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and safe travels, safe travels, and have fun in Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
We're not gonna be together, we're close.
Are you going to a conference as well?
No, no, no.
No, he's family.
Family.
He's got a young baby, stay away, eh?
That's it.
First Halloween.
Enjoy.
Uh-huh, here we go.
Okay.
Enjoy, guys, be safe.
Okay, I think.
Okay, so that does it for the uh department presentations.
So, Rob, what else did we need to?
Yeah, so not much, so just the the next step here is that if there are any changes, and I'm not gonna be doing it this week, but uh I will have a preliminary version that's the next step, is the preliminary version, the budget, that will be November sixth, we'll set a public hearing at that point for uh December, I think it is the third um which is the public presentation hearing on the budget, so if any board members have any input or would like to change anything in the next week or so let me know, reach out, give me a call, um I didn't really hear anything that we seem to be missing or uh anything that anybody wanted to remove from the budget, so um absent any changes, I will create then the preliminary version of the budget and uh that will go to set the public hearing.
Okay, so you'll give us the prelim- preliminary budget on November sixth?
Uh it'll be for the board on November sixth, it'll probably be
And then we'll set the public hearing.
probably that Friday, I'll send it out through the board on the on the first probably and it'll be uh on the sixth, you won't, it'll be made public.
Oh, on November sixth, that's not a board meeting.
November sixth is not.
November sixth is a board meeting.
Yeah, 'cause Tuesday's election day.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Do we do or don't have a board meeting tonight?
We have on the Wednesday.
We have you on the sixth.
On the following day, the sixth.
Wednesday, November sixth.
So we'll we'll get.
Oh, oh, Wednesday, okay.
Yeah, so we get the preliminary budget and then we will set the public hearing for December third, that's the plan.
And it.
It starts at what time, Jill, what time does it start on Wednesday?
I may have a problem.
Um.
It's a typical board meeting, it's a full time.
It's a typical board meeting, are you gonna have a problem, 'cause we switched it to Wednesday, Jen?
I may have a problem.
Oh. It's.
Okay, let us, let us know and we'll we'll schedule it accordingly, 'cause, yeah.
I'll find out.
I may as well.
Okay. Oh, we may have to.
Yeah, I hadn't realized.
I didn't either, I think.
I didn't put it together.
I and Thursday is easier for me.
I didn't have it.
Uh yeah, we have, we don't have the room though, 'cause Thursday's court, so we have no way to meet.
True. This place is crazy on Thursday.
If you do it to the twelfth, that's enough notice, right?
What about Monday?
What?
Yeah, we we could move it to the, yes, how much, how much time do you need for that?
Well, if it's December third.
Yeah.
It's November.
I it it's enough, it's enough notice for um the the paper and publication, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lauren.
Alright, yeah, thanks, Lauren.
Wait, but who's saying they can't make Thursday?
We don't have room.
No, 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 we don't have a room.
We don't have the room.
No, we don't.
So what about Monday?
I could do Monday.
I could do Monday.
Same.
Monday what, the fourth?
The fourth.
I have to see if I can start, I'll call it.
I I have my wife, my wife has a separate calendar, a family calendar that is in here, I see seven PM wrestling dinner.
Oh, that's a big one.
I can't.
I remember, I remember that, we my son, my son was on the wrestling team too, so I know.
We.
I think it's the best, the coach memory.
Coach Bellwether.
Yeah. Genuinely cares.
I- is it bad to skip that week and do it a different week, or is it? Yeah, yeah, we we may, we may kick it over.
Okay.
Well, because because we have to set the public hearing. I guess we we can do that outside of the meeting, but.
Just as long as there's a notice, you have time.
Yeah, we did it on the twelfth, yeah. You did it at twelve.
Well, we missed the week, we we bounced back pretty well, we couldn't get anyone, I'm not curious, Jill, with your experience, this is why the town boards don't meet every week.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we are like the only ones we have here.
We, I I have discussed this with Jill and, you know, so we, it's something we should definitely talk about because there are weeks that are very light and like you say, I know one town, I I believe Sarsel has a meeting once a month.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's twice, twice a month.
I don't, I don't.
I I don't think that's too rare.
I think the, I think the standard is about two months, two meetings a month, yeah.
Twice a month, yeah.
I I personally think that we can get the business of the town done, you know, in every other, every other week.
It's true.
Um it's certainly a lot of busy work, a lot of paperwork for the staff, um it would certainly be easier to attract people to these positions if it wasn't every week.
Yeah. Yep.
And and uh you know we don't want to shirk the work that that's necessary, I mean, we we definitely want to get the work done and do as much as possible to be on top of everything, so it's not for lack of wanting to show and do the work, but if it's um
No, it's just not efficient use of time of everybody's time.
If it's not the right, you know, example.
And if we need a second meeting or to come in on a Friday morning to to for a few hours, we do, then we, when we asked to.
Right, the due time, like during budget, budget time, there would be more, but anyway, so I'm I'm glad you brought that up because. But anyway so I'm I'm glad you brought that up because that was something that I was kind of waiting till beginning of next year you know prior to next year to start talking about but um.
Okay that would maybe so maybe we should pass on the the meeting of the sixth and let's go to the twelfth goodbye.
It's probably two weeks yeah.
Yeah. Okay so that's it I'm just gonna get a press release.
Okay.
Lauren you're.
Yes thank you.
Okay so we'll skip that then.
Thank you Jill thank you Rob.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah that's. And we'll think about meetings every every other week I think if it was ever an option that would be.
Right so.
I didn't give it was ever an option that would be.
Was definitely not.
That's liberating for my opinion.
Right.
Tuesdays I often will go into the city to work because I know I'll be back here so I try.
And and also just like I just wanna mention this in public so I I don't know if people have noticed we were sending the town newsletter out every twice a week. And I think there's a balance between keeping people updated and expecting newsletters and overdoing it so that people just do not open their emails. And I I think there was a sense that two times a week was excessive so we've played around with the dates we decided to send one newsletter out per week. And if you notice you know uh the newsletters were going out on Fridays but Friday is a little bit too close to the weekend so now we've determined to send the newsletter out on Thursdays.
Which I like.
One newsletter a week with the supervisors report and the town administrators report once a week every Thursday there may might become a Thursday.
Like the exceptions.
Thursday is good because sometimes after a a board meeting people have meetings the day after so it's um sometimes not possible to you know to send out the newsletter on Wednesday um.
Right. Yeah and the first thing is because it you know it lets people know what's happening on the weekend about doing a plan like by the time you got there on Friday it was like oh that passed.
So that's what we're doing.
Yes it does yeah.
And people people are not overburdened by too many emails from the town and also people didn't get the difference between the Wednesday and the Friday letter especially the flyers cuz Wednesdays used to be only for community.
Yes.
Events and um then the Fridays were outside events and no one understood the reasoning it's not intuitive.
Yeah.
But I think.
Anyway that's the plan.
So so our schedule going forward is we are meeting on October twenty second next Tuesday.
Oh.
We will have our work session on town board meeting on the second so we'll be starting in uh at five thirty um we were not meeting on the twenty ninth because it was the fifth Tuesday of the month and then we'll be meeting again on the twelfth.
I agree.
Okay.
So basically only one more this month.
Yes.
And then I'll turn to weeks.
Okay so basically we will be on an every other week schedule for the next four weeks. And let's see what that's like.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
The twenty second and then again the twelfth.
And al also we didn't have as many meetings over the summer summer was slow and that worked out well far away.
Right. That's that is what that was we we used to we used to meet every week in July and um I take off two weeks in August that used to be our our big thing and I.
Yeah.
We've we've just become far more efficient than we do. Okay.
Okay well all four efficiency.
Yeah.
Yeah um and just a reminder the um Lauren is just having me check on the uh the boards and commissions list. But uh we're gonna be sending out our invitations for our volunteer recognition dinner which is going to be on November fourteenth this year um.
Can we say who we're?
Yes absolutely go ahead.
We are recognizing Eric Nicolason for his many many years of service.
Who is.
Glad we have finished your schedule.
I'm got yeah I have to tell you it was a little touch and go there with his schedule and there he could joke it.
He has done so much over the years and I I'm just learning the extent of his his uh his work for the town Jill you can uh what what what's good.
Yeah life life lifetime member of the fire department lifetime member of C VAC rotary he's been a town board member he was deputy supervisor.
Wow.
He currently is sitting on our board of assessment review the guy is.
Wow.
Harry uh isn't he on the board of the cemetery?
Yes he is on the board of the cemetery yeah Harry.
Yes that's right.
Yeah he is.
Yes because he almost couldn't make it to the fourteenth because.
Mm-hmm because of that meeting. Because of the board.
He had a meeting he told him you know drive the board and sit up to the dinner.
You have to they have to release you for this one yeah um but boy talk about you know.
And he's still active I mean I see him have all these.
It's the guy is like they have already done it and and I'm sure we're gonna be graced with a couple of jokes.
I see him.
So I am thrilled to be honoring him it's great I'm sorry about that.
Yeah it's a great selection great selection um yes okay I think.
Wonderful.
Okay we're good um no resolutions this morning?
No.
No okay so we have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye alright thanks.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks everyone and I wanna thank Jen for joining us an hour early.